I'm going to call this meeting officially to order at 9:03 a.m. And thanks, everybody, for coming. We're now at 77, so toddling a little bit. And I have a few housekeeping issues to take care of. First, I am Libby Lewicki, and I am the Chair of the Community Outreach Subcommittee of the School Committee. And so I'll be mediating this meeting. And this is a first for me to run such a big meeting. And there's... Okay, so you can tell I'm a little nervous. Have some housekeeping issues to take care of first. We're going to try to keep this coffee hour to about an hour. And please be assured that there will be more opportunities this summer to connect with Dr. Austin and other members of the leadership team. We will be recording this message. Oh, and that reminds me, I need to read this comment, the chair comment. "This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town superintendent in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair," that's me, "at the start of the meeting in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law 30A 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording." So that being said, if anybody's planning on recording this meeting, have a think. Okay, so moving on. Dr. Austin will start with an opening statement followed by a question and comment, not necessarily answer, period. If you want to ask a question, you can raise your hand either digitally or by waving back and forth like this and trying to get my attention. I will do my best to call on you in the order in which I compute you. This is the first time I will be leading a public forum like this, so I will do my best. We're all experiencing a lot of firsts these days. And as such, the Community Outreach Subcommittee of the Hingham School Committee is very pleased to host the very first virtual coffee with the superintendent. Cheers to all of you, and thank you for coming.
It'll be iced.
Got my Hingham music mug. So I'd like to introduce my colleagues that are on with us. I'm not even sure who at this point, other than I see Nurse Kurenti and Michelle Eyre. And I know I saw Carrie Nie. I imagine there are others of us. Jen Benham, she's new. Thank you, Jen, for joining the school committee. Congratulations. And I'm sorry for those who I'm missing. I'd like to introduce Dr. Austin. Dr. Austin has had an inaugural year that would send the best of us running. But he has pulled the Hingham Public Schools through a global pandemic with a sheer force of will that is admirable. Was it a smooth ride? No. Is everyone happy? No. Can we promise perfection in the future? No. But here we are, present and ready to tackle this predicament that we are in together. And Dr. Austin is excited to connect with you in an effort to maintain a partnership with you. A partnership that acknowledges that we are all on this teeter totter together and that we will all work together to make sure that nobody falls off. A partnership that acknowledges that we do not have all the answers, that no one is perfect, and that there will be a lot of push me, pull you, that requires trust and room to learn and change and grow together. A partnership that says we all will work together to ensure the children are safe first and foremost, and that they are learning and growing as well. In order to do so, we must all stay informed, respect, and obey laws, and participate in the community. This is the best civic lesson ever for all of us, and we can lead our children by example. We can wear our masks in public. We can wash our hands frequently for more than 20 seconds, which feels like forever. We can keep a respectful social distance. These are all things we need to be modeling for and teaching our children this summer so that they are ready to go back to school in August. These are, we all need to be modeled and taught to our children, and we can all get started immediately to prepare them for reentry. No matter what, we, as a community, will have to balance the needs of the individual students with the needs of the schools as a whole. Parents need to trust that they will be sending their children into a safe environment, and the schools need to trust that the students are healthy when they come to school. We are all learning as we go. The lessons that we learned this coming year may very well be the most important lessons that we learn and that the children learn about: community, civic duty, and love for one another. Thank you, Dr. Austin, for your positive attitude, unstoppable energy, and unwavering attention to safely steering the Hingham Public School system. Thank you, Dr. Austin. And with that, I will turn it over to you for a moment for you to tell us what's on your mind, and then when you're ready, we can open it up to questions and answers. And I will do my best to call on people when they have questions.
Hey, Libby, thank you so much for the comments. And I don't have a written statement today, which means good luck for all of you who will have to sit there and go through my written comments. In one way, that's probably good. And two, that means I have to temper how I, how much I say, so I don't keep you here forever. But first of all, I want, I want to just start by, I think, acknowledging our students and families for what they've endured over the past three months since March of 13th of 2020. Without, without question, this has been an incredibly unprecedented event in history, where, where the families have had to be home and partner, and not only partner, but become home educators in many ways, and being supported by a school system to the best of our ability. To a school system that had to shift and flip a switch to, to try to provide home instruction that it was never designed in a brick and mortar, education system was never designed to do. And so I want to just acknowledge the, our students and our families for your patience, for your hard work, for your gratitude, and the things that you say about our educators and system. And, and even though how difficult it was, the amount of appreciation that I saw, yes, there's time for criticism, and, and there's plenty of that, too, as, as we all were critical of a system that was not designed to do what we did. And we need to learn from that, and we have learned from that, and we will continue learning from that environment as we move forward. So I start by just saying thanks to the students and families, also to our staff and our teachers, our support staff and our teachers, you know, for the other foundation of our system. And I thank them for their tireless work and patience and endurance of three months of, of what we've been through and now a well-deserved summer break for most. I want to thank them for all their hard work. And finally, the leadership of the district, our principals, assistant principals, directors, our central office staff, our director of student services, our assistant superintendent business manager, all of our support staff in central office. You know, I, I hear, you know, about how much work we've done or, or personal work that I've worked hard. And I can tell you that I couldn't do anything without these people that are, are standing up for the district every day. They are truly the backbone of our system, and I appreciate everything that our administrative team and leadership does to ensure the very best education possible for our students every single day, and that we are able to do things in a safe manner for our staff, for our students, and moving forward. So I thank them. I thank them for their continued work, because the work is not stopped. We need to now work in the summer as we think about what the future holds. So I want to thank everyone in our system, and finally, our community for the support of the Selectmen, for the town administrator, for the relationship we have with all of our town leaders that support Hingham Public Schools. So I'll start with that. Now, we have 96 participants on the, on the line today. What I'm, so obviously, I know there's lots of questions out there. I don't think that I've ever seen a Zoom meeting that I've had to be the, the one answering some of the questions or, or being asked the questions of so many people all at once. So I know there's lots of questions out there, and I'm going to do my best today to give you information. But let me preface this, that I think, you know, I know there's a lot of hot button topics out there. I know there are a lot of unanswered questions. I know there are people who are anxious about what, what fall is going to look like. And I don't have a lot of answers yet. I simply do not have a lot of the information to be able to say, this is what Hingham Public Schools looks like on August 31, when we hopefully open our doors. And so I don't mean that to frustrate you or to disappoint you in any way, but I think it's so incredibly important to continue to communicate with you, to, to be open to your questions, your comments, your concerns, so we hear them. And, and this is just one way, this coffee conversation is just one way that we're doing that. Last week, we filmed a short, I don't know, five-minute video just of telling you about the work ahead and about the, and unpacking a little bit of the policy guidance that we received from the Commission of Education and the Governor. We are actually going to tape again on Thursday from Foster School this time. Just, again, not telling a lot of new information, but just keeping in the loop on what our plan is, what our plan is of moving forward, how we're going to approach this work. We will do that regularly through the summer. It won't be just me. It'll be some of the administrators and many of the people behind the scenes. So I hope to focus our conversation this morning on your questions regarding the reopening of schools, any, any comments that you've had so far, what I've said so far publicly in the press to you in video, or, or what we'll say in the future. I'm certainly willing to take those questions. So point of order, now we're up to over 100 participants, so we're in triple digits, which is good. It's a, it's an engaged community. What I would say, if you click on your participant button on your screen on your Zoom, it'll give a raise hand item. And Julie O'Halloran is, is online with us. She's a central office. She's my newly, newly appointed executive administrative assistant, Julie O'Halloran. As you know, that somebody may know that Pam is retiring. As of this is her last day today, and she may even be on the line somewhere. But Julie will be looking at those raised hands so we can see you. With 100 people, our screens have multiple screens, so we're not going to see you if you just raise your hand. We may not see your hand raised, so if you can use your raise hand button, we'd be more than happy to call on you. So with that, I'll stop. I'll just say thank you to everyone. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad that we have this level of communication. Thank you for the support of Hingham Public Schools, and we'll open it to questions. Before I do that, actually, before I do that, we still have Michelle Eyre. You're still Chair of the School Committee until, for another few days. Is there anything you want to add today?
No, thank you. No, just, it's so glad and excited to see so many people here. I see that you already have your first question. I see a raised hand from Jack Greeley. Every once in a while, I like to feel like a teacher and call on someone. But no, if you're ready to, if you're ready to take a question.
Okay, but wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm going to jump in here because I didn't see that raised hand, and I want to be the one calling on people. So who, as I thought I had this under control.
Julie is still the host.
Yeah, Julie is still the host. So how did Michelle see the raised hand?
I don't know.
I have the participant box. But let's let Jack ask his question, and then we can figure out. I'll text you, Libby.
All right, okay, go ahead, Jack.
All right, thanks for your time. My question is about, do you anticipate any capacity issues with kindergarten, given like the spacing guidelines and, you know, especially with regards to full-day kindergarten? Should there be any changes there?
Thank you for that question and what we're doing, and that's a great lead-in. It's probably the best lead-in that I could have. Thank you. Right now, we are measuring the capacity of our classrooms, so I don't have that answer for you yet. But one of the things we're doing, looking at the capacity of spreading across three feet, because we know the, the new guidance is that we want at least three feet apart from student to student. And so what we're going to do, and what we're already doing, is we're in there measuring each classroom across the district and across grades, and looking at the capacity for every single classroom, as well as some of our other additional spaces in the schools, so we can spread people out even further. So at this time, I don't have a full answer for that. We're hoping that we're going to be able to utilize all of our space to be able to have, particularly at the K to eight level. And before we go to a 912, this does not mean 912, that I can't fit everybody in, but let's just look at the elementary level right now. We're certainly hoping to be able to have all of our students K5 in the buildings in one capacity or another. That's the hope, but I'll be able to answer that more fully once we've measured every classroom and we can identify all of our spaces and how we would use that. But our, once again, our, our initial plan is that to get as many students in as possible. So if there's a way to get everybody in, we're going to try to do that as long as we can do that safely.
Jack, did you want to follow up with anything else?
No, that's pretty clear. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
I have one. I only have M. Dupin on my, my screen.
M. Dupin, what's your question?
You're muted, sir.
Thank you. First time I do that. Question, it's actually a follow-up from Jack's question and something I've been asking, I've been more, meaning to ask. So I understand that, you know, so there's an limited amount of space in a classroom, and you guys are measuring it, which is awesome, but if you find that there is not enough space, what's it going to be?
Yeah, that's the, the requirement from DESI, what they're, what we're understanding. And, and I want to preface all of this, we just got this guidance last week. And so we're, we're still thinking exactly what does it mean? We're unpacking that, and we're waiting for new ones. So I think part of the idea with DESI is that you have an alternative plan of, of this, this hybrid plan. If you cannot put all of your students in the schools at one time, then what, what would the plan look like? We might have some out for remote, and it could be an alternating week, could be lots of different things. I, I want to caution everyone, please do not speculate. Anything I say is our plan. And so when I say it could be something, it could very well be, I don't know that yet, and that's not even our thinking yet. We're going to let our, we're going to let our subcommittees do their job and, and come back with all those alternatives, but I believe that's what the hybrid model really is, is designed to do, is to address if you cannot get all your students into the classroom, then what's the plan for those that are not there? The other part of what we don't know yet, and, and so we're, we're looking at this time, and we're waiting for a little more guidance on how we're going to, we're going to survey the community. Because I suspect there will be some families who do not want to send their students back at this time. And so that's going to impact what we're able to do and how many students we're able to get in. So if I have a number of students that they'll say, no, we're going to prefer remote. And, and honestly, what we see in this first guidance is that it will be our responsibility when a family is not able or unwilling to send their child back to school, they choose remote. We need to have a plan for that. So that's the third part of, of our plan, is what will remote learning look like? And, and I'm going to, I'm going to, without further delay, I'll say that, you know, I'm certainly hoping that remote is going to look very different than it had been in the past, you know, where we're going to take a strong look at that. I don't know exactly what that looks like right now, but we learned a lot of things over the last three months, and we'll certainly allow the education subcommittee that Dr. Lbilwar is, is chairing to really review that information and come up with a plan of how we do that. So, so the, the long answer to your short question was there are multiple scenarios that we have to play out, and we'll be planning for each one of those. But do I have those yet? No.
Okay, fair enough. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm seeing Jennifer Murphy has her hand raised.
Yep. Hi. Thank you. So thank you, Dr. Austin. I think you kind of just answered my question, which was around the remote learning and what, as parents, we can expect to look different, because I understand that in the spring, the focus was really on the health and safety of our students and our community. But now I think it's time, as an, as a community, to, to bring the balance back towards academics and the social and emotional health of our students. So I was just curious about how the remote learning, although it's, you know, it sounds that everyone's goal is that we're all in person, but remote certainly seems like it's going to be part of the, the solution as well. So I was curious as to what that might look like and how it's going to support those other parts of the scale.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. I really appreciate that question. And, you know, all I can say at this time is that it is going to look different. How different, you know, will, the details of that, we will share as soon as we have them. But we would agree with you that it's going to have to look very different. We, we have to attend to that academic piece. You know, we're not going to be able to, this won't be a pass fail, or, you know, there won't be, you know, what I would suspect, you know, the, the attendance is going to have to be mandatory, all those kinds of things that people are concerned about. But, you know, again, I know that Dr. Lbilwar is, is going to be working on that with his team. They haven't met yet. I know they're meeting this week. I think, Dr. Lbilwar, just to kind of clarify with you, you're meeting this week and beginning to unpack that data, and we'll start to look at some of those options.
That's correct. Our, our first meeting is actually tomorrow. And so I am the Chair of the Instruction and the Social and Emotional Learning Subcommittee of the RAC. And so our task is to develop three different plans. One for full return in-person instruction, one for a hybrid model, and the third plan is completely remote instruction. So our team got the guidance last week when it was released. They, and, and I should mention, our team is comprised of parents and community members. We have teachers from all three levels, as well as administrators and building leaders. So, so the goal is to sort of develop plans that meet the needs of our students, also meet the needs of our community, as well as our teaching faculty. So our first meeting on that work is tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you, Dr. Lbilwar. You know, one of the things that I want to say, too, that I didn't mention was our technology infrastructure, which was not prepared, obviously, to go to full remote in March. And, and so we will be surveying the, the community on the technology needs you have as well. We know that I was about 325 laptops short for our staff to be able to go full remote. We are, we are preparing that order right now to ensure that all of our staff have laptops and that they can, they can switch that, switch when it needs to happen, because there are certain, there are certain scenarios we have to run through. Even if we start school, you know, if we have a resurgence of the, of the virus that shuts us down at any time during the year, we need to be able to go to remote quickly, and we need to do that effectively. And so we're going to make sure that all of our staff have the infrastructure or the technology that they need to be able to do that. And we're going to need to know from the community what the community needs are as well, so we can, we can plan for that. So there's, there are lots of, there's an incredible amount of work to be done. But I want to assure everyone that, one, we were well-prepared for this. About a month ago, we organized these groups. We, we organized the RAC, the Recovery Response Advisory Committee, which is a steering committee overseeing four subcommittees. The four subcommittees are Education, Social, Emotional, that Dr. Lbilwar was just talking about, Student Services, Special Education Subcommittee, which is chaired by Dr. Viness, a Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, and Finance Subcommittee by John Ferris, our business manager and Director of Facilities and Sports Services, and, and a, a new committee that we organized as well, which was Public Relations and Communications, which is very active and ensuring that you get the information you need on a regular basis. So we prepared for that about a month ago, and, and as I've said in the press, and I'll continue to say, we're, we're ready to hit the ground running with the information we have. People are ready to get to work, and they're ready to dedicate the time needed for the rest of the summer to get that work done.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to, I see Laura's iPad. Laura's iPad.
Hi, it's Laura Donnelly, and you've answered a lot of my questions so far, but I also just want to, first off, thank you, Dr. Austin, for your communication very early on in the pandemic. Your weekly communication pieces were calming and assuring and just excellent leadership at a time that I feel the district needed it. And so thank you for that. I don't want to look back on the spring. I want us to look forward on the fall. And so one of my questions about remote learning is what systems are we going to put in place to support the teachers? Because it's two very different teaching techniques, teaching in the classroom and teaching online. So what type of professional development are we going to offer, are going to be offered to the teachers and professional training in that sense?
Great question. So, you know, and, and again, I appreciate the fact we're looking forward. I think you're absolutely correct, but I think we also have to learn from the past, and that's how we move forward, right? So, so just to start with where we did, first of all, I want to thank, we had some, some folks on our staff that did an amazing job of providing literally hundreds of hours of professional development in Google Classroom, online platforming. Teachers, and I actually attended a, a meeting they had to kind of showcase all that they had learned over the last three months, and I was absolutely blown away by the level of work that folks had put in to learn a platform that some had just had no idea of how to do. And, and at the same time, to recognize there's still learning to be done, and there's still tremendous distance to go. So one of the things that we do, when we will, in the summer, when we survey, we're also surveying our staff to find out what they need. And so we will, we'll find that out. We'll, we'll ask them their opinion. What is it they need for professional development? And a lot of it's going to depend on what model we, we need to be in. But we also have to be cognizant enough to be able to shift and be flexible enough to be able to shift from perhaps in-person learning into a hybrid model, into remote, and be able to go in and out of those as flexibly as possible. And so with that, we're going to have to have professional development available to our folks at any given time and ready to go. So we will be looking at that. We're going to survey our staff to find out what their needs are, and then we'll be prepared to, be prepared to, to be able to provide that. One of the things that I will say, we are, I think everybody's aware, we've just passed a budget. And part of the, for the generosity of the town and how well we work together with the town side of things, and I say town side, the town administrator and I work very collaboratively, Mr. Mayo and I work collaboratively. The reality is the town spends about half the money, and we spend the other half. And so we've been working together to develop a plan on austerity plans that we've all bought into. And so we are doing our very best to be frugal with our finances, even though the town has, basically, they have that additional warrant that we anticipate up to a 19% loss in revenue, and we still don't know what the finances look like. So part of what we're doing, we have literally been very careful with professional development right now. Generally, teachers would be doing all kinds of different things. We're being really cautious about what we're offering, so we save our finances to be able to do that. We need to be very clear with what we're able to do in the future and be able to prepare for that. So I just want to give you, you know, the, the, the thought that we are being really cognizant that we are going to need professional development for our educators, and, and we will prepare to do that when it's time. Thanks for the questions.
Oh, gosh, seeing a teacher hard, and I, in my experience, teachers are the most creative and flexible and enthusiastic people I have ever met, and they are always willing to lead by example and learn, learn, learn as best you can, no matter what the circumstances are, what, what they teach all the time. So my, my thanks go out to the teachers. I'm seeing that Lynn I'm seeing that Lynn Vanderhoven has raised her hand. Lynn Vanderhoven would be asked a question.
Hi, thanks, Libby. This is Lynn Vanderhoven, 15 Hoover Road. I had a follow-up to Jennifer's question earlier. In reading the DESI guidelines that came out about six weeks ago, and then the most recent guidelines, both of my sons are wildly curious about what September is going to look like. And so I have a fifth grader, a rising fifth grader and a rising seventh grader. And their biggest concern is what is the social going to look like? Because what my understanding is, and what I've conveyed to them, is that even if we do go back into a building, you're going to be eating your lunch in the classroom and you're not going to have recess the way you know it. You're not going to have the social opportunity. So after not having seen all of their friends for six months, I was just curious if you could expand a bit more on how we're going to do a deep dive into the social-emotional part of this. I have great confidence that Hingham will figure out the academic part of it. I think that 2.0 was a great improvement over 1.0 and the beta site that we had. So if there's any, anything you can share about that, that maybe we could share with our children, one, and then, two, just from a district-wide perspective, how are we going to attack that?
Thank you for that question. And one of the things that I can tell you, and I'm going to turn it over to some of the other folks that are in the schools that are probably thinking about that as much as, more than I am. But I know it's something that's on the mind of our administrators about how we ensure the social well-being of our, of our students. We know full well that they've been out of school by the time August 31st comes, nearly six months, and they absolutely need to be together. They mourn that loss of up-togetherness, and so we hear that. So I'm going to turn it over first. I don't know if, Dr. LeBilwa, you have anything to add on that, just on what your thoughts are, just as you approach the, the social-emotional needs of our students?
Yeah, so our Director of Counseling, Heather Rodriguez, is really heading up the work, looking at the social-emotional sort of aspects of the plan. I think it's certainly in our thinking, what we have to first figure out, if this makes sense, Lynn, is what the classroom is going to look like, right? What is the building going to look like? What is the building flow going to look like? There are certainly some suggestions that we eat lunch in classrooms. That makes sense in K to five, maybe K to eight. It doesn't make a lot of sense. So we have level-specific challenges in interpretation and implementation and planning around the guidance, right? So what we're, what we have to sort of, in terms, we have a team of sort of 35-plus people, and our initial goal is to figure out what is the base structure going to look like? And then that's almost, that's almost sort of the infrastructure. And then we're going to build sort of from the infrastructure out, talking about the layers of support that may be put in place, not only socially and emotionally, but also academically. Our directors, our content curriculum directors are looking at how best to adjust our instruction to ensure we meet the standards. So I think that we don't have, I don't have a clear plan to point you to, because when it comes to social-emotional, that has to be an offshoot of the base infrastructure of what the classroom is going to look like. And so the masks, for example, are worn only when we can't ensure physical distancing, right? So there's certain components that we could be able to play around with, for example, at recess time, or when there is a break, or when there is a mask break, and what that recess will look like. And so the, I know I'm not being, I'm sorry, is somebody not muted? I'm getting a weird feedback on my...
I'm hearing it, too.
Yeah. Anyway, so...
Can I have everybody mute their lines, please? Thank you. Go ahead.
That's much better, actually. So I know I'm not being incredibly specific, and that's because we have to first figure out, it's sort of a stepwise approach to the planning. So the first is, what is it going to look like? And then from there, how do we ensure the full life of the school? So as you all know, school is much more than academics, right? It's social connection, it's emotional connection, it's physical activity, it's athletics, it's drama, it's the arts. And so coming back just to classroom instruction is really only like one-fifth of our planning. And so, but the, the planning for the other pieces really has to come out of that initial planning of what the classrooms will look like, because that will give us a lot of information around what the structure of the buildings will look like. And so it's a long-winded way of saying we're not there yet, but we, in our planning, that is certainly front and center. And actually, our group is looking at both instruction and social-emotional.
So can I just ask a quick follow-up?
Please, yeah, please.
Because, right, so what we've learned through all of this is that all we know is what's happening today. But we know that we've got a possible online, a possible hybrid, and a possible, we're back at school. As you're moving forward and developing curriculums for all of those three, is there a social-emotional curriculum being developed for the online component of this, and the hybrid, and the actual physical in school?
Yeah, so they're, they're going in tandem. But what comes first is the academic, and that's what we have to figure out first, because then we have to figure out where it fits, right? So if it's, and it really, so follow my thinking. If it's a, if it's an online model with live instruction, that's a different kind of approach than if it's asynchronous, right? So that's, those are the pieces where it's hard to answer until we know what the instructional model is really going to be, and what our contact with kids will be, what our contact with our teachers will be, and what our planning is. So we actually already have a structured, deliverable, social-emotional learning program in K to six. When we transitioned to online learning, we really focused on academics. That was sort of our primary approach. What we learned coming out of the spring was that wasn't enough to really fully support our learners, right? So taking that information, that's now why actually our Subcommittee is named Instruction and Social Emotional Learning. Those two things are going in tandem. So yes, there are plans being developed, or let me rephrase, there will be plans being developed, right? Across those three sort of possible scenarios, and for each of those, there will be an academic focus and a social-emotional learning focus. Not only are...
I know I'm burning up everybody's time. I think that, from my perspective, and for, so my boys, they both have social skills issues, right? So across the district, I would have to believe that there's some level of trauma around the social-emotional component that we've lost. And so here's what I would ask, and you don't need to answer this, but I would ask that we look at addressing that, no matter where we start August 31st, that there's some level of, right now, starting to dig in about how we can address that as a separate component from the toolbox or any other program.
Yeah, so just to reassure you, again, that we understand those components. Actually, our professional development model is focusing on trauma-informed instruction. And we're partnering with the, we hope to be partnering with the Trauma Center at a Newton to actually help us support some of our professional developments, so our teachers and our administrators and our entire faculty understand the impact that trauma has on kids' availability for learning. As a licensed psychologist, that's my background, trauma-informed instruction is certainly one of the lenses that we're using. We also have a real big community push for a focus on equity and race issues, right? So we're trying to marry the multiple demands of the community in terms of our planning with our teachers. And so there is, there could be some, there could be some adjustments to the calendar to give us more time with our teachers. Remember, our professional development model allows us really one day with them when they come back, and then we don't see them again for PD until November, right? That's not going to work. So as our team, again, builds the model, so too will come adjustments, almost like a ripple to a stone in a pond, right? As, once we know what the core model will look like, all of those ripples will then be addressed. But just to reassure you, our primary focus and administrative team knows, for the last month or so, we've been talking about, we need to really focus on trauma-informed instruction as we come back from a very traumatic event. And most people, because, I started in an urban, I started in Boston Public Schools, right? Working with students from an urban setting who experienced trauma on a daily basis. And so a part of the work that we need to begin to do with our faculty is to begin to have, help them better understand how trauma manifests in kids, what trauma is, and how kids respond to that across multiple settings. Because that particular behavior issue actually may not be behavioral. It may be sort of a manifestation of their anxiety or their feelings relative to the traumatic event, right? So I'll sort of stop there, so I don't sort of take everybody else's time, but please be reassured that you have a talented group in your administrative leadership team who understands all the multiple facets. And actually, that's why we have Heather Rodriguez, our Director of Counseling, right there with me, leading that group, looking at instruction and social-emotional learning.
Thank you so much for a comprehensive answer. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie. I know we all need some reassurances that, you know, our kids are going to be okay. And, you know, we need to be okay, too, as parents, and we need to show a level of trust and model that for our students when they go to school. And I believe that this is a forum to really build on that trust, to know that we're all working on this together and that the parents can, you know, convey a level of, go, let's do this. You can have some fun while we're also learning a whole lot, you know, at the same time. You know, we can, you know, try to find moments of fun, too, and love and happiness in all of this, and it's not all tragedy and doom. And that our administrators are working very hard to make that happen. So...
I mean, I think we have, Julie just said we have six people asking questions ready to go. I'm really, we got about 14 minutes to get to our hour, so...
We're going to try to get to everybody. So I see Megan Sutton has her hand raised.
Hi, everyone. It's actually Megan's husband, John Sutton. First of all, echoing Laura's comments, Dr. Austin's team, thank you so much for everything that you've done over the last couple of months. We know these have been crazy times. My question is simple. What's the rationale for not mandating temperature checks at the door of the schools during school days?
No, I, that's going to be better answered, to be honest with you. I don't want to skirt your question, but that comes out of the medical community and what the infectious disease doctors are saying are the best protocols. So I don't know. I'm just assuming like everyone else is, the medical professionals have determined that's not the most effective way to manage or determine if there is symptomology or students who might have COVID-19. So I'm assuming that, just like everybody else, and trusting our medical professionals. And one thing I will say, I mean, I think the Commissioner has done a phenomenal job of involving the medical community in his discussions. I mean, we have probably the finest medical facilities in the country, and the greatest mines sitting right out within 15 miles of us. And so we're very fortunate with that, and that's just the guidance that they've told us at this point, that they're not suggesting the temperature checks. I will caution everyone, I'm expecting two more guidance, you know, communications between now and the opening of school. So I expect one probably mid to late July, and another one mid to late August. So those things are subject to change. So if the medical community feels that that's in the best interest for our students to do a temperature check, they'll let us know that ahead of time.
Dr. Austin, if I could just jump in there, too? So just to expand on Dr. Austin's answer, the, there's, the major reason from the communications we've been given, one of them is the likelihood of false positives or false negatives. Like, so the, the ability for that to actually connect to reality is one of the things that the medical community, to Dr. Austin's point, is suggesting we don't do, because if we get a false positive, then we sort of create a level of confusion or concern when none exists. And really, the emphasis is on, that's your role as parents to monitor the medical wellness of your kids. And so that's really not our role to take their temperature. So one of the, that's the partnership part, right? That's where we need the partnership of the community to be able to ongoing, ongoing monitoring of your children and potential symptoms. That's really, so that's the other piece of it, is that, that's really, in the Commissioner's sort of discussion, it was more around, that's really not our role. That's the role of parents and families. So the expectation will be a partnership to make sure that you're monitoring your kid's health and wellness, and we'll take care of the education and the social-emotional learning. Then the other piece is the, the reality of the accuracy of sort of mass screening for temperature.
Yeah. If I can just add to that real quickly?
Dr. Austin.
What's that?
Quickly, please.
Oh, yeah, just, I can't overemphasize enough that this is a partnership with you. You know, for this to work, for us to be able to come back safely, one, we need to be very vigilant over the summer, do our best to follow the CDC guidelines, do our best to wear a mask, do our best to control, to the, to the, our best of our ability, control the spread of COVID-19 over the summer so that we can come back to school. And then when we do, we are going to need parents to be incredibly vigilant with their children in the morning. Take those temperature checks, make sure if there's any symptoms, keep them home, please. Because the reality is that we're going to need us all together, working together, to make sure that we're able to do this safely for all people in our school building. So go ahead, Libby, sorry.
Okay, that's, thank you. I think that's important to establish that understanding. I'm going to call on Alissa Hackett, please. Let's just question Alissa.
Good morning. I'm in my car. I just got a question about masks for the little kids. So I know the state guidelines say that they're not required to have masks on kindergarteners and first graders, but that it'll be encouraged. And I'm just wondering if you guys anticipate that there's going to be masks for everyone, including the little, little kids in the common areas, like the bathrooms and the hallways?
Yeah, I think, you know, preliminarily, what I will say is that I think our expectation is that even though they're not required at K2, we'd expect, you know, that we'd encourage people to do that. You know, we want people, if you, if you're able to do that, to, to wear those masks whenever possible. Again, we all just want to take this, we want to be incredibly vigilant in our, and keep everyone safe. So there will be some more thought, and I expect more guidance on the K to two in particular, about what that looks like. But our initial thoughts are that, to the extent possible, we would ask that parents really consider strongly encouraging their children to wear masks in those social situations for all of our students, not just, not just the three to the 12.
Yeah, I'm getting used to wearing them now.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have Kay Gould with her hand raised. Kay Gould?
Hi, good morning. And I echo just the thanks and gratitude for everybody's work during this incredibly complex and fluid situation. I was just wondering if you could address and talk a little bit if there's any guidance or from DESI or planning underway for what happens when students or staff or teachers do test positive, and kind of what those thresholds are that then necessitate the shift to online learning or remote learning, and moving outside of that in-person classroom? What kind of, any guidance or thinking in terms of what those thresholds and actions would be? Thank you.
Okay, great question. I don't have the guidance yet. I do expect I'll have that later this summer. I know that's something that the Commissioner and the medical community are working on to determine what that threshold looks like for us, and so we'll be better prepared to respond to that and put those in place, but I don't have that yet.
Okay. So we'll wait, we'll await on those instructions. Stephanie Gert has a question. Stephanie, thank you so much for engaging in the civic process and running for a school committee, and we hope that you can help us as much as possible this year, and we look forward to speaking with you and doing everything. So what is your question, Stephanie?
Thanks, Libby. I just want to, I'll sign out, talk quickly. I wanted to follow up on Dr. Austin's talk about professional development for the staff. It's sort of something I beat my drum on a lot the last few months, is that the parents who are really co-teachers are at their very last, at very least, parents for the teachers. So we really need, we need some professional development, too, as we do remote learning, and some understanding of what's coming home and what we need to do. And we all have different equipment at home that we're using, and I think that was some of the difficulties this year. So is there a thought for how parents are going to get professional development as we're co-teachers in this process?
Stephanie, great question. One of the things that, when we, when we survey, when we're going to build these surveys for parents, I think that's one of the questions. So obviously, one, we have to find out what, what technology people need and how we get that or help you with ensuring that if we go to remote learning, we're able to do that. And two, I think we need to find out exactly what parents need for professional development. And so I would suspect that we can add that to our survey when we do that, to, to be able to find out exactly what the needs are and then plan for how we can provide it. Great question.
Okay, thank you. Seven more minutes and three raised hands. And I just want to assure you all again that we will have more opportunities to ask questions this summer, for God's sake. So Tim, what are your questions, please?
Thanks. I'm Tim Dempsey, 88 Kilby, and I have a rising sixth and seventh grader, and both of whom are special ed. And last year, my sixth grade year for my kid was sort of a lost year because it was, I was completely unprepared for what a difficult transition it is to go from elementary to middle school. And by the time he found his feet in the school and really started to make progress, we went to remote learning. So I'm now looking at doing the same transition with my youngest and wondering what type of transitions were, have, how, how we're doing that transition when we really have had no preparation for it? And how the transitions from, especially from elementary to middle school are going to work?
Good question, Tim. I, I appreciate that one. You know, I know that that's something that our, our administrative staff have been very concerned about. And I would turn it, does anybody want to tackle that one as far as what you're doing in school? Mary Eastwood, I'm seeing you. How about just ask for another voice out there?
So generally speaking, yes, and thank you, Dr. Austin. Thank you, everybody. This is a wonderful forum. One of the biggest things that we have worked on is that we've been very concerned. So at every grade level, we've done all kinds of transition activities. And I know that Mr. Smith, who's the principal of the middle school, is also, we've had a lot of conversations with him. And he's trying to think of all different ways, whether it has to be virtual or live. But there will be opportunities for the students depending on what's allowed. And that is, that is also, it's, I know this is kind of a lame answer because we don't have specifics yet. We don't know if we can do things live or not. But I do know that if we can do things live, there is a plan to have the rising sixth graders certainly have some live orientation opportunities. And if not, I know they'll do a wonderful comprehensive virtual. They also, Dr. Smith, visited every single fifth grade class, I don't know if you know that, on Zoom meetings and answered all of the students' questions. And the teachers, I actually was in charge of the fifth grade team across town. They also worked hard at answering all the students' questions and letting them know they're going to be fine. The normal things they would do live, they did virtually. But I do think there'll be definite, specific opportunities in August once we see exactly what we can do. Live is the big hope, and if not, I know they'll take care of it virtually.
Thank you. I know we have, we're at about five minutes now. I, I know there's, I think there's three questions that are in the waiting room. I will stay on as long as it takes to answer those three, just so we know that.
Okay, thank you, Paul. So we're going to move on to Sue Garland. We have two more for that, then we'll call to that.
Hi, and thank you for taking this time this morning. My question is about the teachers' union. I've been monitoring sort of their Facebook pages and their posts, and they seem pretty frustrated so far with the DESE guidelines. And I'm just wondering how much involvement we will have, the town of Pinnan will have with the teachers' union in making sure that they are on board with our guidelines? Because what I don't want to happen, or our plan, I don't want us to get to August and say, here's our plan, we're all going back into the classroom. There's going to be three feet of space between the desks. We're going to get as many kids in there as possible. And the teachers are going to say, or the teachers' union will say, no, we don't feel that safe for our teachers. We're not doing it. Could you just talk, talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, thanks for your question, Sue. And, and I mean, I think this too, what you see, I think, a lot on, on Facebook, et cetera, is from the MTA itself. So it's from the parent organization of our HEA. I, I would tell you that I have regular communications with our union representatives, and I will continue that throughout the summer. We need to work collaboratively with them. We have absolutely phenomenal teachers. We have absolutely phenomenal support staff. We need to hear their voice. I need to hear their concerns. We need to work collaboratively with them so we do not run into that situation that you just described, we're in August and we're in trouble. They have a voice in it. Whenever we change educational output, how we do education, they have to be involved in the process. They have been a collaborative partner with us. It doesn't mean we always agree on everything at the same time. We all get that. But I, I think, and I can't speak for June Gustafson, as the President of the HEA, I think we're both dedicated to ensuring a safe return for everyone and that our voices are heard and that we work collaboratively through the process to avoid any of those shutdown things that you talk about, where we're just not able to do something because we haven't involved them in the process. So you have my commitment and your assurance that I will continue to speak with them and, and have them be a full collaborative partner with me in that process.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to move to Susan O'Hara. Susan, it's your question.
Hi, thanks so much for doing this again this morning. This has been really helpful. I guess, just to echo the question that was posed in the very beginning of this seminar, but was actually only answered with regards to the elementary schools. And I know we're just starting this process, but how we, or when will we get a handle on the space in the middle school and the high school? So whether, so we know whether we'll have a capacity to be full-time in-person learning versus having to go to a hybrid model? And the reason why I'm asking is, A, to help set expectations for the kids, and also, B, for the parents who work outside the home. You know, it's, you know, it impacts childcare. And, you know, it's going to be, it's, it's a short nine, eight weeks away until we're back in school. And for, you know, the, those of us who actually work outside the home and who have continued to work outside the home in this epidemic, the hybrid model is a disaster for working parents. And I, I can't emphasize that enough. And it's, it's for a working parent who's trying to navigate not being able to have in-home childcare because you actually cannot have someone else in your home right now. The hybrid model is, you know, aside from everything else, problematic. So, you know, knowing this information, knowing whether we're going to go to full-time in-school, in-school learning versus a hybrid model, you know, makes a big difference in how I plan and how I budget, frankly. Because if I have to hire someone to be in my home 30 hours a week or 40 hours a week, or whether that's every other week, or three days a week, or whatever it is, that impacts, you know, my bottom line. It's not just a question of, of, you know, my kids want to see their friends.
Thank you, Susan. I, I appreciate the question. And then I, I thought I had discussed a little bit about that at the beginning. And, and I, I want to preface everything as that this is a K-12 system, or pre-K-12 system, right? And so the things that we're measuring right now and the, the space involves all pre-K through 12. We're not, I, I heard from some folks over the weekend that were concerned that we were looking at remote for high school level and elementary would be in. That is clearly not where we're heading right now. I want to be clear with what we're talking about. I am going to do everything I can to get as, to open on August 31 for as many students, K, pre-K through 12 as possible, and as many educators in that same system. I, I understand the, and, and my children are grown, right? And so I have, I have grandchildren. I understand the impact that it's had on my grandchildren's education. I understand the impact it has on your children's education. And I'm going to do everything I can to safely bring back as many people as possible. I simply don't have the answer right yet of how many students that is. But we are measuring the high school as well as foster, as east and south, and, and the middle school, and I know I just left one out, Plymouth River. Thank you. But we're measuring them all. And we're going to have a comprehensive plan about how many students we can bring into each one of those settings. We also understand, and this is the frustrating part for all of us, you know, we, we, if we need to switch, we know that that's going to have an impact on the community. We know that a week on, week off, just for example, not that I'm even thinking this, but a week on, week on would be almost disastrous for people who work out of the home. It would be difficult for our teachers who have children in another system. It would be very difficult to do. We understand that. And so we're going to do our very best to get as many children as possible, hopefully in an in-person setting. And just like all of you, continue to have a positive thoughts that by, if we can get through December, if we can get to the end of the year, on the end of the 2020 year, we have either a vaccine or something that's going to make this better for all of us. And, and I think where we're in this, I know it's hard. And I encourage you just to continue talking through this with us, and, and we're in it together. And we're going to make it through. We will do whatever we can to support you. You have my assurance for that. I'm going to do whatever I can to support the families, and I know our educators are poised to do the same.
I guess my question was more so, when do you think we'll have a handle about the space? And when do you think we'll have a chance about to know whether it's going to be a hybrid versus, you know, the space, whether we'll have enough space to do the hybrid versus that? Not so much, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, the space issue is going to be relatively soon. I mean, I, I'm going to suggest to the, if we're going to have, I like this forum. Frankly, we have almost 100 people here. I don't, I, I was, you know, I, I think it's always hard. This is Zoom. And I prefer in, in-person things, but I think this works well. I would suggest we have another conversation maybe in the first week of August so that we, we follow this up and, and have, I'll have much more information to add. But I will also tell you, Susan, I'm going to share information when I have it, all right? I'm committed to a regular weekly. I know that Katie Roberts is on here. She's, she is our Chair of our Public Relations and Communications. She keeps me incredibly on task to have a weekly conversation with, with you and to communicate regularly. So we're going to continue what we have, when we have information, we will put it out to you when we have that. So you have my commitment to do that. So whenever I have things that I can share, I will certainly do that as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. You're all having to plan for multiple contingency situations. And Dr. Austin just mentioned Katie, oh, this is Katie Rogers. Katie Roberts, who you did just mention, but it's Katie Rogers who has her hand raised. And she would like to ask a question. Katie Rogers.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for, for doing this. This is wonderful. I have kind of two questions, but maybe they might even be suggestions because they're nuanced at this point. And I'm not sure how deep you've dived into these. But assuming a hybrid approach, first, will there be an attempt to keep siblings on the same schedule of going to school versus remote? And then the second question is really nuanced, and that is kind of piggybacking off of the question on the temperature checks. Assuming that we have a child that stays home on a given day, maybe with like a slight cough or a low fever, but that doesn't preclude him or her from actually learning, will there be some flexibility in allowing that child to engage in remote learning on that particular day? Either under a hybrid approach or maybe even a full-time approach now that we have this platform in place? Sort of to incentivize parents to, you know, keep kids at home even with the slightest cough or fever on that particular day?
Okay, that, that's a great recommendation. And frankly, I hadn't even thought that far ahead yet. I'm going to be honest about what we can think about, what we can't. But I think that's a great recommendation and thought for us to have. You know, I, I think, you know, we, suffice it to say, whatever we're in, we're going to have to be prepared for remote learning, of what that looks like. And so I think that's just food for thought for us as we think about the couple of issues that you just brought for us. You know, I, I don't know what it's going to look like yet, but we'll be thoughtful of that. And I do appreciate, I think, in particular with that one, I, I don't know if there's any way to make sure that if we have to be in a remote, I mean, a hybrid model, that we're able to keep siblings. I think that would be fairly complex to do. That would be tough. But it's also recognized it's tough for families. So that's something we'll, we'll think about for sure. But I think the other part of your question is, what we want to do, we want to encourage parents to keep children home if they're not feeling well and have some assurance that they get some education during that time. I, I think that's a legitimate concern, and I thank you for that recommendation and thought.
Thank you.
So many really, really good questions, and I just appreciate you all coming and participating in this forum and working together this summer to have the best re-entry possible in August and keeping our flexible pants on the whole time. And I am going to thank Dr. Austin one more time and all of the top brass and the other committee members for coming. And go ahead, Michelle.
Sorry, I think there's one more question, if Dr. Austin has.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, so, and then it's 10:08, so let's try to, this is the last question, and we'll look at Jack Greeley now. Thank you. Jack.
All right, just one more at the buzzer. There was a comment you made earlier about, you know, potentially encouraging kindergarten and first graders to wear masks in certain situations. You know, I, I was just curious how that decision would be made. And I'm, I'm thinking that some would argue that, you know, these are some of the most important years for kids in terms of language development, and they would, you know, prefer not to have masks on those kids if that's possible. So curious what's going to go into that decision, if that were to be made.
Yeah, again, I'm going to wait for that guidance to come out. We expect more guidance from, from the medical community on, on that issue. And I will certainly adhere to whatever guidance the, the state has on, in regards to the wearing of masks and what we should encourage and what we don't, as well as the CDC. And I think your points are very well taken. Just so you know, I have three children, grandchildren, oh my goodness, no, not three children. Three grandchildren, all who are in kindergarten this year. I understand that as they go into first grade of what that looks like and how that might impact their learning. And so I understand that, and we'll wait for more guidance to, to see what the medical community has to say about that.
Okay, thank you all. Please join us next time, whenever that may be. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, please? Do this officially.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the subcommittee meeting of the Community Outreach Subcommittee.
Thank you, Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and aye as well. Thank you all, and have a great day.
Thanks, everyone. Have a wonderful day.